Welcome to the February 6, 2024 Work Session and the 86th Voting Session for the Mayor and Council for the City of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And can I have a motion?
You actually need a motion to go in a special session.
Can I have a motion to go in a special session?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of memorandum of understanding for the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services for the End of Violence Public Resource Organizing to the End Crime Together Program, PROTECT.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services for the End of Violence Public Resources Organizing to End Crime Together. This program will be administered by a PROTECT Coordinator, a full-time state employee, who will be assigned to the Hagerstown Police Department to oversee the mandated program at no cost to the Hagerstown Police Department.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At least we have a proclamation for Black History Month, and with us we have Taj Schmidt. She's the President of the Washington County NAACP, and we also have Pastor Les McIntosh. He's the Vice President of our Washington County NAACP and the Lead Pastor at Impact Ministries. Could you guys please join me up front? Hi. How you guys doing? Well, I have a proclamation for you. All right, so proclamation for Black History Month, February 2024. Whereas, and we love whereas this year, Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans for a time for recognizing the central role of blacks in U.S. history. Americans have recognized Black History Month annually since 1926. And whereas, the theme for Black History Month 2024 is African-Americans and the Arts. I like it. Whereas, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History states, African-American art is influenced with African, Caribbean, and Black American lived experiences. And whereas, Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect and celebrate the contributions that African-Americans have made in our struggles for freedom, equality, therefore deepening our understanding of our nation's history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, with the support of the City Council, Tequisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize February's Black History Month and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlighting the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for all the things that you do, from all of the meetings. I mean, I see you in county meetings, in school board meetings. I see you down the road at the NAACP meetings. So thank you. And Pastor, you already know. Thank you. Thank you for all the things that you do for the City of Hagerstown.
Is this thing on?
So I would just like to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to accept this proclamation. Our history is so vast that it really can't be contained in one month. However, we need to be advocating for our stories to be preserved, for us to be celebrated, for these stories to be accurately taught in schools. And I truly believe that knowledge is how we will create a diverse and equitable community. So I thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your enduring commitment to this cause.
He said bless y'all's bones. Tell him one time. Bless your bones. Well, thank you so much. Oh my goodness, this is my one year.
Yeah, I think, yeah. She gave proclamation, her first one last year.
Wow. If you turn that right around.
Right. Still alive. Next, we have water video 101.
And Mayor, I'd like to take this time to show you all, one of the things we wanted to do, based upon some meetings we had, meetings with the county, and in my work that we did downstairs years ago, was try to present a way that people, the citizens and customers of our water service could better understand what it actually takes to get water out of the Potomac and get it through their faucet. And there's been a lot of misunderstandings, there's been a lot of misinformation on how that happens. So we thought the best thing to do is create a video, and one that can be played and hopefully, I think, understood by the youngest that want to watch it and by the oldest that want to watch it. So we wanted to kind of debut that here tonight. We have our two stars of the video in the back. Matt Carr, who runs the R.C. Wilson Plant, and Assistant Director of Utilities, Director of Wastewater and Water, Tyrell Puffenberger in the back. So Eric, if you would start the video, and this will be available on the cable channel and also available on social media.
It's not rude if you leave. It's not rude if you leave.
Have you ever thought about where the water you drink, take a bath, or wash your clothes with comes from? Chances are you haven't, since water is there whenever you need it. But what does it take for the water to get to your house? It takes a water treatment plant. Hagerstown has the R.C. Wilson Water Treatment Plant. In the late 1920s, Hagerstown's population was growing, and its natural resources were unable to keep up in order to sustain Hagerstown's water supply. As a result, Hagerstown endeavored to create a reliable water system. The city built the Edgemont Reservoir above Smithsburg, the west end reservoir next to today's Helane Park, and added many wells around town and tapped into Kaiser Springs and City Park. While this was a good effort, this network, coupled with annual droughts, failed to maintain a consistent water supply to the city. This led Mayor Bowman and the City Council to look for a location capable of sustaining Hagerstown's water demand. A site was chosen along the Potomac River in the town of Williamsport. The new water treatment plant was completed on December 7, 1928. I'm Matt Carr, Water Production Superintendent for the City of Hagerstown. Today, we're going to take a tour of the R.C. Wilson Water Treatment Plant and learn what it takes to bring a clean, consistent water supply to Hagerstown and surrounding areas. We'll start our tour at the source and work our way through the plant, following the water from the Potomac River to the pipes that bring it to our customers. The Potomac River is approximately 3.5 million years old. It's the fourth-largest river on the east coast, and it stretches 400 miles from the confluence of its north and south branches to the Chesapeake Bay. Because the R.C. Wilson Plant draws water from the river, it's considered a surface water treatment plant, as opposed to plants that draw water from springs or aquifers. The water that fills the river comes from rain, melting snow, and the many tributaries along the river. However, as the river fills with water, other items and debris are washed into it, making the treatment process necessary. The first form of treatment is at the intake structure. Steel grates called bar screens cover the intake chamber. These grates keep out large objects such as fish, logs, leaves, turtles, and large chunks of ice during the winter. The next step is a mechanical process called the traveling screens. 65-foot-tall screens move in a circular motion and activate as they fill with debris. The combination of the bar screens and the traveling screens removes 99% of the large solid material that would ultimately destroy the pumps and sensitive equipment if not removed. After the water moves through the traveling screens, it is pumped to the pre-sedimentation basins. These basins hold approximately 1.2 million gallons of water and are turned over or replaced every five hours. This is the amount of time it takes one drop of water to travel through the basin processed. This is known as detention time. Potassium permanganate is fed into the pre-sedimentation basins. This critical chemical assists with removing algae and prevents undesirable tastes and odor. It is also during this process that the pre-seds are used to combat heavy turbidity. The term turbidity, or NTU, is a measure of how much dirt or suspended particles are in the water. The pre-seds function in a way that enables the heavier particles to settle and sink to the bottom. After moving through the pre-sedimentation basins, the water travels to the flash mixers. It is here that the first coagulant is introduced and rapidly mixed with raw water. The coagulant is a positively charged chemical that helps suspended dirt come together to form a heavier mass called flock. Following the flash mix comes the appropriately named process called floculation. Floculation is broken down into three stages. During each stage, positively-charged water passes through a basin with large paddle wheels that stir the water. At each stage, the paddle wheels move slower and slower. As the water is mixed, flock forms larger clumps that will eventually sink to the bottom of the basins. As the flock settles, the water at the top becomes cleaner. At the end of the sedimentation basins, the top foot of clean water is collected. This water travels to the filters that remove any remaining turbidity, ensuring that it meets our state and in-house standards. The R.C. Wilson Water Plant routinely reaches turbidity below .03 NTU range, far exceeding the state regulation. Passing through the filters, the water is now ready to be treated with chlorine. This is the most effective way to disinfect the water. The water is chlorinated in our clearwell, which is over 400,000 gallons, and turns over every 35 minutes. Fluoride is also added here. As we near the end of our tour, some final chemicals will be added to the treatment process to maintain our exceptional water quality as it enters the pipes that will bring it to your house. We added caustic soda for pH control and an orthophosphate that will protect the pipes from corrosion. At the end, the water is pumped into the distribution system at a pressure of 157 PSI. This pressure allows it to reach the highest point in Hagerstown. From there, the water will flow again, utilizing gravity to reach pumping stations and eventually your home. The City of Hagerstown takes great pride in the product we provide to our customers. Thank you for touring with us and taking the time to see how we do things. Please come visit us again. The water plant is always open to schools and tours. Water is one of our greatest resources and should be understood and protected.
My name is Tyler Puffenberger. I'm the Deputy Director of the Water and Wastewater Divisions. I want to talk about the next steps of the process after the water leaves the treatment plant, the water distribution system. The water distribution system comprises pipes, valves, pump stations, and water tanks, and so move water from the treatment plant to the homes we live in, the offices we work in, and the stores we shop at. To support all this, we have eight water storage tanks through our system. Four are on the north end of town, three on the west end, and one out east in Smithsburg. We have over 90,000 customers in roughly 450 miles of distribution piping. Our system reaches as far north as state line, as far east as Smithsburg, as far west as the state prisons, and as far south as Williamsport. To maintain the system, staff and automatic controllers help monitor the water levels inside the storage tanks. Water storage forces water out using air pressure, a pump, or gravity, ensuring it flows properly through the system. Proper water flow guarantees enough pressure to all 90,000 customers and a constant water supply. The system's pressure level will vary during the day or night. It depends on who is using the water. Peak demands for our distribution system are when people wake up, shower, and get ready for the day, or when people get home, start making dinner, or washing clothes. The summer season is usually our highest demand, with people watering their lawns and filling swimming pools. Another use affects demand is for fire suppression. Warehouses need sprinkler systems to protect the workers, and if your house catches fire, the Hagerstown Fire Department taps into one of our many fire hydrants throughout the water system. Our community is growing fast, and more and more people will need water. We're all part of the system, and the fees we pay on our water bills help maintain the distribution system for everyone. The cost of the water treatment plant and the distribution system is ongoing, whether it's a new regulation that causes plan upgrades to maintain compliance, older deteriorating equipment, or replacing aging infrastructure, and repairing breaks. All this costs money, and water conservation is one way to help keep costs down. Here are a few tips so you can help conserve water. Fix leaks, including leaky toilets. Install highly-efficient toilets, aerators on bathroom faucets, and water-efficient showerheads. Take shorter showers. Track your water bill and meter usage. Turn off water when brushing your teeth or shaving. Use dishwashers and washing machines with only full loads. We appreciate you taking the time to learn about the R.C. Wilson Water Treatment Plant and the water distribution system. Thanks for watching.
Bailey Bagels, so the commercial tenant will be occupying in April or May for, I believe it's gonna be the Bailey Bagels first and then the brewery portion will be coming about thirty days after that.
What did they do with the elevator that was in there?
It was more-
It's a feature.
It's a feature that's staying, it's required by MHT, Maryland Historical Trust to remain. So, the top floor actually is gonna have the lift, actually it resides in the rooms.
This is a historic tax grant project, which is why the Maryland Historical Trust was involved. Also got a lot of assistance from the city. And we do not have a picture of the Hub City Brewery, but that is an ongoing process to convert the old city market to the Hub City Brewery. I don't know if you have an update on when they expect to be opened, Don?
The last I heard is it's gonna be before the stadium completes, so let's call it April of twenty-four is what we're looking at as far as the date right now. They just got the licensure back from the state to beginning their distilling and brewing process, so I believe their glycol unit for the brewing just got put in place last week. So they're gonna be beginning production of their beverages here shortly if they haven't already begun, and they'll be opening for the public probably in the April range.
Okay, now moving on to the commercial industrial district projects, you know, leaving behind the downtown projects. The first one here, this is the Light Business Park, which is back at the end of like Cameo Drive and behind what was the Old Food Lion off of Eastern Boulevard. This got started in the early two thousands, this was an annexation into the city, and then things slowed down with the bust in the economy back then. Now, they're seeing some rejuvenated interest in their lots because the road is now connected across the bridge. This has been mainly a medical business park and they're still getting interest from the medical community. So the road improvement project is good news for this development, which will be nice property tax revenue for the city. I don't have a photograph of it, but the HCC Bowman Workforce Training Center, which is in the, going into the old Gold's Gym on Northern Boulevard. They're adapting that building into their workforce training center. That is in progress. It's not as obvious on the outside, but they are in progress, they have their permits. And that'll be a great facility for, it brings that kind of training much closer to city residents. So hopefully it'll be easier for our community that needs this kind of training so they can get higher paying jobs and it'll be easier to get there. Okay, this is correct now. All right, this is the Hagerstown Fieldhouse, a project by the city of Hagerstown. But the site of the old stadium, and it's gonna be a hundred and sixteen thousand square foot indoor courts and fields recreation facility. We had the groundbreaking on December twelfth and the plan for completion is by the end of this year. And the city engineer seems to feel that that is definitely achievable. Nope, don't have a picture of the Boys and Girls Club. This is not the Boys and Girls Club. This would be the world's largest. They are, they are doing a redevelopment on Pennsylvania Avenue in the eight hundred block. They've already cleared the land for their new facility. They, the site has been cleared, that's as far as things have reached at this point. They do have a site plan approved for the new facility, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a wonderful facility. Next is Kerwood's Logistics Park. Do you wanna touch on this one?
Sure, so Kerwood, the first tenant, we just recently had an announcement. We have the, the first tenant taking the one point two million square foot space is gonna be Webster. They're gonna be occupying the space as of July first and being their operations there. So very excited about Webster, they're coming down from Pennsylvania. This will be around their twentieth distribution center across the nation. And this will be their cornerstone distribution center for the northeast operations.
For the public's benefit, that comments on all the warehouses that are being built and appear to be empty, it would be helpful for the public if you'd just say specifically or geographically where this is at.
So this is right off of Edgewood Drive.
Halroad.
Halroad and Edgewood Drive is the location of this particular location.
Behind the car dealership that used to be Hopkins. Fitzgerald, that's right, the radio guy.
The second smaller building is at shell condition right now, so they're still searching for the tenant for the smaller building and ready to go and as far as leasing goes. But the, the large portion of this site is gonna be occupied as of July first and does have a lease in place.
And expected to have about seven hundred jobs available, yes, so those jobs come in.
And the smaller building, the baby building, which is still out of square footage, is built, which is in the background there, that white square. And the next one is the Western Maryland Logistics Center. This was an annexation on Western Maryland Boulevard.
Sure, the first tenant, so the, it's two hundred sixty thousand square foot warehouse. The first tenant is Euro Logistics, so it's a third-party logistics company that supports some of these larger warehouses. Take, is taking about half the space, so nearly half the space is leased as well for this particular project.
And all we have for this one is, is an aerial photo, but the Lowe's Distribution Center in the city on Vaiso Boulevard is doing a huge addition, a two hundred and six thousand square foot addition to the right of the existing box that they have there. And they have a site plan approved for that and the permit has been issued.
Over eighteen million dollars of additional capital investment by Lowe's in this particular site.
North Point Building Four, which was, I guess, the smallest of the buildings, the one closest to Burr Hands on the north side of Vaiso Boulevard.
And the backside of this logistics center is under lease with Pack Pride, another one of those third-party logistic companies.
We do not have a picture of the Pangborn Park Mini Warehousing Project by Jeff Crampton, but that's on Pangborn Boulevard where the old factory was. There's still one part of the factory building still standing. All the land to the north of it wrapping around the corner of Pangborn is being developed into mini warehousing, which is a use that we've accommodated in the selling district for sites that have environmental constraints. And this site has an agreement with MDE on the capping of, of the ground, and so this was a low-impact kind of development for the site. And that is in progress. Just the aerial photo wasn't that impressive, so we didn't include it. Oh, well that's right, sorry. Yeah, this is a, a fresh photo, all of a sudden the Sears building is down.
Right?
You drive by one day, it's up.
I did that this morning, like once.
This is going to be a Sheetz convenience store, retail gas sales. So they, they're getting there with the demolition. The, with the challenge with this is that I had to first shore up Northern Boulevard because this building sort of held up Northern Boulevard, so they, before they could take it away, they had to make sure that Northern Boulevard wouldn't collapse. So they had to do that part first before taking the building away. And so then the Sheets will be set down, it won't be up at the Northern Avenue level, it'll be set down in the site. Next, it's not on, I guess we don't have photos for the next view. Hager Hall Barefoot Bernie's Cancun Cantina Property, as it was formerly known on the dual highway, which was the old Ramada Inn years ago. That's under, underway, you wanna talk about what's going on there?
Sure, they're gonna keep a similar concept, so it's gonna be still a event hall, a restaurant, and then a nightclub. And they're expected to be probably finishing up May-June range of this year's, my guess. And it's three brothers out of District of Columbia that's working on that project.
And then we have a couple more of these, you know, smaller warehouse kind of projects that I don't have pictures for. But in the Hagerstown Business Park on Sweeney Drive, the Fulton family is planning, they had a site plan approved for a forty thousand square foot flex warehouse kind of building. And there's been no activity that I'm aware of since the site plan was approved. Another one by Hagerstown Core Development on Western Maryland Parkway next to the prison system, proposed a hundred thousand square foot warehouse, again, in today's lexicon, just a tiny little thing. And it would be next door to the county sheriff's office. The site plan was approved for that. Picture for the next one. And then we have just an unending appetite for developments related to the automobile. So we have a car wash that's been approved at twenty Eastern Boulevard, which is redevelopment of the old Supreme Block site, which is a very narrow piece of ground wedged between Eastern Boulevard and Antietam Creek right by the bridge. And so, business must be good because it's gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be easy site to build, but they have a site plan approved. Then we also have a CarMax site plan approved on the dual highway next to, which dealership is that? Next to Hamilton. And then Gerber Collision in Glass by Vision Development and Construction, that's proposed for where the old Venice Motel was. That also has a site plan approved. And then East Coast Express, which is sort of a vehicle repair kind of enterprise going on the former Melp Municipal Electric Light Plant property. Site plan was approved for that. And then finally, this is Carol Lee Investments, one of the Harris Harrison family tracks. This is adjacent to the widened Arpaul Smith Boulevard and the new Lois Harrison Boulevard. And there was a contract, and if there still is, if you wanna touch on where that project is.
I think it's still conceptual in nature, but I think the point is of, of the expanded roadway access into the dual highway that this land is getting active interest from a leasing or ownership standpoint that we haven't really seen because it's been about fifty acres that's been untouched for, since it's annexed with the city.
It's been in the city about forty years and not taxed as part of the original deal. So this would be very nice to see this finally develop and become one of the city's tax rolls. Okay, and then next we're gonna talk about residential developments that are in progress. This is a map that shows the ones that we're gonna be talking about. The green properties on there are the ones that are in progress. The orange are the ones that are in plan review and the blue are the ones that we, that are out there that we know people are looking at that we don't yet have plans approved for. First, we have Greenwich Park, it's finishing up. This got started during the boom of the two thousands, West Church's developments. Basically, single-family attached, looks like duplexes, but they're subdivided. Very nice development. Basically, mostly, I think, custom-built homes. And as you can see, what's left now is on that, on the left side of the screen where the dirt is, as well as some of the, where the grass is on the top, those already have houses on them. So this is a little bit of an older aerial. They have, how many left? Eighteen units left to be built. And then Kilpatrick Woods, this has finally gotten started. This is on the old grow tract between Salem and Marshall Street. And it's proposed for two hundred and forty-one modular homes for workforce housing. As you can see, they, there's about, one, two, five of them, there are six of them that are set in this photo. I think there's already a couple more out there. Okay. And you can, you can see this development from the road next to the bank and it's Connecticut Avenue extended that takes you back in there. Another entrance that's not open yet, but it's been built off of Salem Avenue. And eventually it will continue on over to Marshall, so that will be one leg of the Northwest Connector for some point in the future when there's a bridge built over the railroad to take you over to the Haven Road area. In, in the future. And then the, the next, Virginia Commons, phase one of this project is underway. That was the part that was already in the city at the, in the upper right corner of this aerial photograph. It's extension of Marion and Armstrong and Moller, and it's for thirty-six single-family homes. And then the balance of the farm, which was annexed within the last year or so, that would be, it's proposed for single-family homes. They're in concept plan development. This, this farm had been sitting waiting for a developer because the developer who was part of the annexation decided not to move forward at that time. And now D.R. Horton has decided to take it on, which is the developer's manor in the city on Eastern Boulevard. And let's see, just they, they are developing concept plans. We saw something and sent them back to the drawing board a little bit because they put down the wrong zoning, so they needed to take another look at that. But they are, they're definitely looking at that and they're, they have moving dirt out there for the phase one part that was already in the city. And then McCleary Hill Development, that's out there on West Washington Street by the Housing Authority. The part that is, the Housing Authority is completed, which is the top photograph. And the, what's still underway are the single-family home lots by the Habitat. And they've already built about, one, two, three, about five of the Habitat houses. They have permits for a couple more and then there would be several more, thirteen other lots available for the single-family homes by Habitat. And Habitat does have the lots now. Brook Meadow Town Homes, did I skip one? Martin Heights, I don't have a photograph of that. That is a redevelopment plan for Nolan Village off of Virginia Avenue, which went out Nolan Drive. They're gonna, they're gonna, it's a little bit complicated. They are going to demol, demolish seventy units and rehab eighty units and then build two new buildings to house forty-eight apartment buildings. They have a site plan approved for the apartment buildings, but because of the funding, they're gonna get, and they have demo partly underway. They have to do the rehabs before they'll be able to do the new construction, so we'll be seeing permits for that, I'm sure, before too long. And then under the pending projects, this is the land proposed for Brook Meadow Townhouses. They have a, a development plan approved for this site and they're gonna be coming in soon with the final plat because they have a goal of locking in their sewer allocation through the SCAP. But once you get a final plat approved, it gets locked in, otherwise you have a certain amount of time that it keeps expiring. And so, they've decided to step forward and it's, it's certainly a good sign because it's something the banks wanna see too, that they, they have commitment for wastewater. And so that was going to be a hundred and nineteen townhouses in a cluster plan. So it's made, it's huddled over towards the east so that a big swath of where the creek is stays as open space, where that light-colored land is and the trees. And then the Boast Eter tract, we had been calling it the Boss Eter Tract, we were corrected too late in the process for me to learn to say it correctly. But it's the Boast Eter Tract off of McDade Road and Broadfording Road. This was annexed into the city. And it's proposed to be single-family homes, a hundred and ninety single-family detached homes. Concept plan was approved by the Planning Commission. They're still working through how wastewater will get to the site. And then the Reese Farm, this was a tract annexed into the city by the Lyles family, the same time the Harrison land came in, you know, forty years or so ago. And Mr. Lyles has plans for the south half to be townhouses and the north half to be apartments. And the proposal, concept plan was approved for a hundred and twenty-eight townhouses on that south half of the tract. And NVR is gonna be the builder of the townhouses, Cavalier Development will be the developer of the land. I do not have a picture of Scarlet Hills or, did I skip? Yes, Scarlet Hills, that got a site plan approved back in two thousand and six by Paul Crampton. If it's for thirty-six apartments in three buildings, the twelve-unit apartment building box that you see a lot in our community. They have been busy with Emerald Point, and so this is kind of sad.
And that's across from South High.
Yes. And then the Reserve at Collegiate Acres, site plans were approved back in two thousand and thirteen for a hundred and twenty, twenty-four apartments on either side of Terps Boulevard at the end up by Mogansville. This land that used to be owned by the Alters, it's been sold to a company in New York. We haven't heard anything from them yet about using the site plan, but with the change in hands, we might see something before you know it. And then the Lawrence Tract, this is the neighborhood mixed-use zone tract behind the old Sheraton, next to the old IBM. I'm sure they all have new names, but that's what I know them as. This is another Harrison tract that's referred to as the Lawrence Tract. With, because of the zoning, the plan is for it to be a mixture of commercial and residential and mixed-use buildings. And it's under contract. We staff have viewed concept plans, the Planning Commission have viewed concept plans, but nothing has been approved yet.
And I'll add, the, the new signalized intersection created by Louis Harrison Lane is creating the opportunity for this tract to develop related from the Kerwood development.
It will be its dual highway access point.
Because that's gonna be about right where the pink dot is there, at least it looks pink to me. Hotel dot there on the left-hand side, it's gonna be right in that area, isn't it?
Just to the right of the two white, to the left of the two white boxes.
Okay.
So last of the photos. And also, just a little bit of an update, no photos, of three, four pending annexations. Fifty-five Oakridge Drive, which is the end of January, the Maryland Council introduced the annexation resolution. And that would be for building one of Johnson Developments' project out there, if you wanna talk a little more about that.
There are actively leasing, undergoing leasing for that particular site, so hopefully more to come as they're prospecting the tenant.
And it's one point two million square feet, is that both buildings or just the large one?
Just the large building is one point two million square feet. There's a phase two building to this potential concept, that would be a five hundred thousand square foot building that situated closer to the prime outlets.
And the public hearing for that annexation would be in March. And then a second annexation following after that one would be annexation of state properties along Colonel Henry Douglas Drive and the I seventy right-of-way, which would get the city contiguous to many pre-annexation agreements that we have on the Sharpsburg Pike. Public hearing for that would also be in March. And then the Blaine Annexation, this is gonna be talked about more during the, right later on in this agenda, actually, actually right after this, so I'll just save my powder for that. And then another one that's just starting is, and this one, I don't know why they went with three H's, but Historic Heights Homes LLC is proposed to be annexed into the city off of Southern Boulevard. It would be contiguous to the, what used to be called Ravenwood Lutheran Village and also to South Point on the west. It's a narrow piece of ground, and they're proposing to do duplexes and one single-family home on that property. And that annexation process will begin later this month. So that is everything that we have for this update.
The fact that you have so many pages here is-
That's kind of the reaction Lane used counsel gave too.
So, I think that this is all good information and I think it's important to put this in perspective for the average citizen that is watching a meeting and hearing about growth. You know, there was one time a day in the early two thousands where all the growth was happening on the east end, right? And you could sort of compartmentalize where it's happening and what's going to occur and sort of see it move from the east, you know, sort of into the city. And that's just not the case now. It's happening on parts of the city, you know, boundary. And, you know, earlier, Councilmember Burnett mentioned that the, the one warehouse that we talked about was gonna generate seven hundred jobs, right? For better or worse, this community is, just happens to be situationally located at prime opportunity for this large-scale shipping and distribution type of commercial activity. And we've approved sixteen, I think it's sixteen, between the city and the county, in and outside of the city boundary, about sixteen warehouses at this point, right? And I try and equate that to the presentation on the residential side. So you just went over about twenty commercial projects. That one project alone is gonna generate seven hundred jobs. That one project alone is gonna generate seven hundred jobs, okay? Right now, in the residential presentation that you provided, the known, the known housing starts, meaning approved, ready to go, getting built, so somebody can buy a house, is about three hundred houses between about four developments. The HHA stuff is, is, Hagerstown housing stuff is pretty much a net neutral, right at the end of the day. The pending or possible is about four hundred houses. So that's seven hundred houses that only half of which are going to happen. The other half, we're hoping happens. Uh, and there are seven hundred folks that will be working at one out of sixteen warehouses that are gonna be looking for a place to live, that are going to fill that employment opportunity. And the other important thing that you said, and I used to say this as a planner all the time, people think that a development gets approved today and the houses exist tomorrow. The one development alone you cited, which I always use this as, as, as sort of the, the average, it takes about ten years. It takes about, you said two thousand and thirteen was the one that sort of sat? Yeah, and here we are, you know, eleven years later. So the reality is, the average housing development takes ten years to get from paper to contract of sale of a home. And we have sixteen warehouses that are gonna generate thousands of jobs, that are gonna need thousands of homes for people to live in, uh, to work at. And I would add this, you talked about annexations at the end. And it is clear, at least for me at this point, in the deliberations that we've had with the county, that there is not significant interest in changing zoning when that land changes jurisdictional boundaries and comes in the city and the county is looking to place a five-year delay on those properties being able to be developed. Which means not only will it push that timeline back to ten years it takes to get from paper to building a home, it's gonna add an additional five years. So it's fifteen years to get from paper to building a home if that's the direction that the county wishes to take. And like it or not, we as collective bodies have approved these sixteen-plus warehouses and there's no stopping on that. They are being built, it is happening. Um, we're going to need, uh, housing for those items. And I will end it with this. We have, uh, experienced houses being built and warehouses being built and other development that have generated revenue for the specific purpose of ensuring that school adequacy exists through those new housing starts. And if I'm not mistaken, we haven't built a new school since I left the Office of County Commissioner back in two thousand and ten. We can count improvements, we can count additions, we can count the downtown doubling, but that's the reality. And we haven't built a high school since the fifties. So I just look at this information that you're presenting and say, it's coming. We need to figure out, uh, how to, to, to focus on it and manage that reality. And I think that, that, that's the takeaway that I have, uh, from, from the presentation of those realities that, that we're going to experience, uh, as a city.
Yeah, well said. Thank you guys.
We might drop on that.
Man, I had to play that back a thousand times.
I have the next one.
Oh, and the next one, sorry. I stepped back, I was like, ah.
You might not be with us this evening, so I am tackling this on my own. This is the, the Blaine Properties annexation that got started last spring. It got delayed for quite a while. We had the, um, we introduced the annexation resolution in March of two thousand and twenty-three, had the public hearing in May, but then it needed to gain express approval for the zoning from the county commissioners. And so then it, it, um, got bogged down a little bit. The, um, because they were proposing, it's, the, the county has the land zoned on the northwest corner of the city as residential transition, which is their lowest-density housing. One house needs a fifteen thousand square foot lot. So we don't have any zoning that matches up with that anyway. But the developer of this tract, which, um, on that map, it would be in the extreme upper northwest corner of the city below the orange square, um, they were requesting RMed zoning. And so that is a change in zoning, which requires the county commissioners to grant express approval. In early to mid-July, the developer was able to get on the county commissioner's agenda to talk with them about express approval. There was a, a long conversation, much, much of it about school capacity and then the commissioner's table discussion to allow more time to talk with staff. Meantime, after that, that meeting, the developer was putting together a package for what they assumed would be coming back to get it off the table, to continue the conversation. And so they put together some financial information about all of the, the, uh, infrastructure improvements they would be doing, benefit to the community, as well as they were willing to offer, um, to, to pay more excise tax on the units to help with the school situation. Unfortunately, they were told that the county refused to put them on an agenda, so it was unable to continue that conversation. So we have to then take that as a city, that's a no. It's, they're not approving the express approval. And when that happened, the developer canceled their contract on the property. So, uh, this caused a great deal of consternation, as you might imagine, for the developer who had, who had the contract, who had spent a great, a great deal of money on developing concept plans for how the land could develop and for the owners who finally had a buyer. And so, uh, the owners have now decided they're gonna move forward anyway, even though they don't have a developer and even though it has to wait five years to use the city zoning. And so it's now up this month before this body for approval of the annexation resolution. And if you do approve it and the request is still RMed zoning, it would need to wait. It would become effective in forty-five days, but it would need to wait five years before a developer could use the city zoning. And so that's where we are today. And so it is, uh, some of the information that you got last year. It is twenty-eight acres on the east side of McDade Road, right next to Hager's Crossing. Um, it's in the, the median range growth area, it's in the urban growth area and it's in the priority funding area. County zoning is residential transition, proposed city zoning residential, medium density. It fronts on McDade Road and Swan Road, water would be served by the city. Wastewater would be likely, would be through, um, improvements to public station in, uh, Hager's Crossing or through the, the new forest man at McDade Road. But it seems more likely it would be through, uh, the city's infrastructure in Hager's Crossing. Public safety provided by city police, city fire and community rescue. Electric by Potomac Edison. And so the next steps would be, um, if the Mayor and Council are ready to move forward, we've had almost a year, be placed on the February twenty-seventh regular meeting agenda for approval of the resolution, become effective in forty-five days and then the five-year wait to use the zoning. And we also, um, made an adjustment to the resolution. We discovered pretty recently that people live in one of the houses on the property and they're registered voters. So the property owner got their consent and that's what is attached to the resolution because you have to have the consent of twenty-five percent of the registered voters that live on the property. They are, they are a hundred percent of them.
Good job.
The other house, the brick house up closer to McDade is, or closer to the Hager's Crossing entrance, is vacant.
Can I just ask you a quick question? Um, because I wasn't here when, I guess, all of this started. And, and this is a proposed residential project, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around what you just said. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that, for whatever reason, I guess no reason given, the county has decided to stifle a potential residential development project that happens to be on the, you know, contiguous with the city. Is that, is that a general correct understanding of what, what has happened?
The gist of the conversation at the county commissioner's meeting was the concern over the impact on schools. And this would go to South High, which is over-capacity by about two hundred seats. And I just saw a report from the Board of Ed and most of the elementary schools that city residents go to are over-capacity as well.
But then they refuse to have any discussion on how to resolve the issue with schools. Okay.
In this case, yes, it was not allowed to come back for the developer to make a proposal.
Okay. Okay, I, I, that's confounding, but thank you for this.
And this, this proves Councilman Alshire's point. What he just made is that if we're not gonna have, if the county is not willing to have a conversation about schools, I mean, we, we can't build a school as the city, we can't. It's a county function. We cannot build a school. And so now we're, our hands are tied.
So this one, the, the owner's willing to wait the five years, figuring that at that point they will have a developer that then will be interested in using the RMed zoning. Well, thank you. Was you about to say something, Councilwoman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Everyone's okay with the approval on the twenty-seventh? Okay.
Yes.
That was Kathy's stuff that I thought they were... I'm kidding, it wasn't Kathy. All right, legislative bill updates, Scott, nice one.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just want to take just a few minutes and go over some bills that we have reviewed through the MML Legislative Committee that, and then, uh, that might be, might have some local interest, uh, but then also at the end, talk about, uh, some local delegation bills, um, that have also, uh, come up and give you some updates on those. So I'll just go over these really briefly. If you look at the first one, SB two sixty-three, HB twenty, real property assessments for the reevaluation of property on transfer after appeal. What this basically does, uh, that if, if real property will revalue during a three-year assessment period, um, a, a property that if within one year after the assessment is reduced through appeal. And that happens with larger commercial developments. But what that means is, the property, it will trigger that if the property transferred, uh, for consideration exceeds the value of the property before the reduction. And what that basically eliminates is the ability to flip at a cheaper assessed value. And, uh, uh, the, the Legislative Committee supported that, uh, because it's not, it's not, we need to be able to, when these appeals come through and these reassessments are done, we need to make sure that the system isn't being gamed and this is one way to keep that from happening. So that's, that's that bill. Um, SB three eighty, HB six eighteen, police recruitment and retention work group. Uh, what this is, a work group, uh, will be created to study ways statewide to in, increase the ability to recruit and retain law enforcement officers. This work group's reports are not done, are not due until twelve-thirty, twenty-five. Even though we support that, we would like to see that expedited a little bit. Uh, and I think it's beginning the recognition by the legislature that things might have gone a little bit too far with, uh, police reform, uh, initially, uh, three, two and three and four years ago, and that we now need to find a way to be able to make law enforcement more, uh, attractive to be a part of. And, and certainly, uh, we've experienced that. SB four thirty-one, workers' comp, occupational disease presumption, long COVID. Uh, it's called the Home of the Brave Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, there were other, um, uh, presumptive diseases in this bill, but this adds long COVID to it. We were, uh, we, we are opposed to this bill simply because trying to prove, uh, one, long COVID in the first place, that you actually, there is no such thing called long COVID, but it's just a matter of, um, still experiencing symptoms of COVID, uh, over a period of time. But the, the bottom line to it is, you can't, how, how are you sure that you experienced that on the work, on the workplace? And, uh, we just see a whole lot of problems with this, with this bill. And, uh, we have, we have put a flat oppose on that. SB four forty-two, HB six oh-one, we've actually had folks come into public hearing or to citizen comments. On this bill, this would, uh, relate to street racing and exhibition driving, prohibited acts enforcement penalties. What this will do will increase the, for the most, the biggest part of this bill, will make it, um, will add points, twelve points and five points. One twelve po, uh, the five point will be just being caught recklessly driving, drag racing, doing whatever on the street. Twelve points will be if there's bodily harm. And once you get to twelve points, you, your, your driver's license is done. So this doubles the points, uh, that are currently on the books for this type of driving. SB four eighty-three, HB, uh, five ninety-nine, and actually, four eighty-four and five thirty-nine, these are two of the bills that are related to the Governor's Housing Affordability Act. Um, SB four eighty-three, HB five ninety-nine, uh, MML-supported. This basically creates the Maryland Community Investment Corporation, which will be the, uh, entity that will, uh, be available to create funding to build affordable housing in Maryland using new market tax credits. Uh, this takes the need to go to the federal government where that process gets expanded and elongated, uh, to get results from. This will create, uh, a state system that will kind of do all that work for us and then we, we can just go apply or an entity can go apply for affordable housing. So this has proven to be very effective in several other states and, and Maryland's just gonna do that here. Four eighty-four and five thirty-nine, bigger problems. Um, even though, um, we definitely understand the need for additional affordable housing everywhere in Maryland and especially in Hagerstown, there are some concerns as far as the zoning density and, and some of the other issues that, um, will create situations where increased density in some areas, three main areas, state-owned lands, vacant state-owned lands, lands owned by nonprofit and lands within a mile of a, uh, train station or a metro station, uh, can create some serious density issues. Uh, and you just saw the presentation that Kathy had, um, there are some density issues that we could experience here where single fam, where current zoning is for single-family homes, that could now have multiple townhomes put in them. Uh, there are some parts of the state that, that would have a significant problem with that. Uh, so we support affordable housing, but we certainly need to have amendments added to that, um, as far as the percentage of, of those that need to be, of developments that need to have affordable housing. But, uh, but also there are some APFO issues for those that have APFO, uh, water, wastewater concerns for many municipalities. So those are the amendments that we're working with the legislature to, uh, to try to fix. Uh, the, the third one of that is the Renters Bill of Rights. Um, MML has not taken a real hard stance on that, but there are several municipalities, Hagerstown included, that we really need to look at how that would affect the development market or those that already own, uh, rental properties, being that we are about sixty-seven to thirty-three percent, uh, rental to, to owner-occupied. Uh, there are some things there that could stifle, uh, the ability to generate good rental units. Uh, but there are also some very good things, again, we have to talk that through. SB four eighty-five, HB five seventy-two, the Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. This is where the city would have to basically begin to contribute to another FMLA situation. The biggest part of this bill is that, that, that will be delayed from, uh, July first, twenty twenty-four to July first, twenty twenty-five, because the state is just not prepared to manage this program yet. Uh, I would not be surprised if that gets moved out again next year. Uh, SB five thirty-seven, HB oh eight oh five, when we were told there would be no cannabis legislation, suddenly there becomes cannabis legislation. And this is based upon licensee locations and zoning that would, that would attribute to basically treating cannabis like liquor stores and allowing those to be placed, uh, uh, in areas where you would have a liquor store, such as we have a liquor store right next to us. That would create serious problems when you don't want to be able to have a dispensary in your downtown core. Even though we do support the ability to, uh, have additional locations, the amendments are gonna be, we don't want, uh, downtown locations of those zoning areas that prohibits areas such as cannabis, uh, Huca, Huca lounges and those kind of things. We don't want those as part of a downtown. Um, again, several municipalities that feel the same way as us, we don't want those downtown. HB one sixty-five, SB seven forty-seven, local government annual audit reporting. You may remember a decade... You may remember a decade, fifteen years ago, when we had issues in Hagerstown with getting our audits in on time. Uh, what this basically does, it says that any local government that does not, that is a, a year or more late in pu, in, uh, providing their audit to the state, uh, will lose, uh, uh, police aid and will lose highway user revenue. Even though we support that we need, that municipalities need to get their audits in, we think it's a little harsh, uh, on all that direct aid being lost. So we are working on amendments with that. This is really geared towards specific municipalities that are habitual offenders. Doesn't relate to us because we're not late to get those in, but still, it's pretty harsh. Property tax sale and revision, I'm not gonna get way into this, but what this does, it will not allow, uh, the biggest issue we have, it would not allow us to send the tax sale parcels that have abatement-only tax delinquencies. That is a huge issue for us. There are, uh, there were several other reasons you could not, municipality could not send a property to tax sale. Too numerous to talk about here. We're opposing that because we need to be able to move, to move the properties. Uh, property tax improvement on agricultural land assessment, these would be exemptions to various forms of agricultural buildings that would be built, uh, such as a new barn to have event space, equine, uh, barns, new bits, new, new bills that would be able to get exemptions of twenty-five to fifty percent. Again, we, we always oppose exemptions on our ability to, uh, generate, uh, to receive property tax revenue as long as that revenue is seventy-five to eighty percent of what we get in, uh, every year of what our revenues are. So that was opposed. And then I think lastly, uh, HB six ninety-two, Economic Development, County or Municipality Economic Development Authority Powers and Use of Proceeds. The biggest thing here is it expands the, the ability to use TIF financing, uh, to deal with debt load on, uh, on projects and, uh, and several other things. Those are like, uh, there are many municipalities in Maryland that like to use TIF financing. I think the last time we used TIF financing in Hagerstown was Garland Grove. We have not looked to use TIF since then. Not saying we would, but if we, if we would ever consider, we got a lot more opportunity to, uh, to use it. Just some miscellaneous items. Already talked about the Renter Bill of Rights, already talked about the property tax exemption bills, which more likely than not, we're gonna oppose because we need property tax to, uh, revenue to, uh, to operate. Workers' Comp Eligible Claims expansions, we're usually gonna oppose those uh, simply for the fact that, uh, and there are several workers' comp eligible claims expansion bills out there, uh, that pretty much any, it's getting to the point where anything that happens, you can file a workers' comp claim. There are some local bills that are not moving forward. One of those was one that was, um, kind of mystifying to me, tax sales of county and municipal parcels only. Uh, the bill would have only allowed to go to tax sale those parcels that did not have county and municipal taxes paid, unpaid. So for example, if you're new to the area and you're a city resident, you go to the county and you pay your county tax bill, but you fail your, failed to pay your city tax bill. The way the process is now and the way state law is, is that we can send those city for collection of city taxes only for tax sale. This bill would have gotten rid of that. That, after the delegation, uh, reviewed it, decided to table that, and we will obviously oppose that and work to oppose it. The second was a, really a county, uh, bill that, uh, wanted to take the elected position of county treasurer and make it appointed. That was also tabled, uh, until perhaps next year. Delegate Grossman has a bill in regarding the licensing of homeless shelters. I haven't got to read that one yet. But it would put additional requirements on, uh, any, uh, any home, so to speak, home or facility that was to be a homeless shelter to make sure the quality of care was kept up. It looks like a good bill to me, uh, but it will put additional requirements on the ability to open a, a shelter. I think those additional requirements from what I can read are, are for, um, ultimate safety. If nothing else, to make sure that you're just not opening doors and, and letting folks in. Just a, a couple to add. I was, I was talking the other day to the directors in, in our directors meeting about I hadn't seen a water bill, uh, shut-off restriction bill through yet and was kind of hoping we wouldn't see one, and yesterday we got one. Which would, uh, there are many, uh, not as bad as the one we had last year, but still it would severely restrict our ability to shut water off and loop for non-payment. We'll talk about that more in Annapolis tomorrow. I'll go down this evening and, and be there in Annapolis tomorrow. There, there are a couple others. Uh, one is the ability, is repealing the authority of a munis, of a municipality to prohibit vagrancy. Which would mean you could not go and if you had someone who was acting up on, on the street, they were a vagrant, uh, homeless person, you could not arrest them for whatever activity they were, they were having. We have to look at that one more. Again, we just got these yesterday. So we would have to, we'd have to look at those, and we'll discuss all those, uh, tomorrow. We're also meeting tomorrow with, uh, members of the Legislative Committee dealing with transportation, where we will be talking about, uh, well, I will be talking about I eighty-one expansion. We drove I eighty-one Saturday, and I had to pry my hands off the wheel, uh, by the time we got into Pennsylvania. Where it's really not much better. But coming from West Virginia in the three lanes into, once you get past the Williamsport exit to get to the state line, I will say that the, the, the group from the Community Coalition did a great job. And the Community Coalition booklet, if you don't have a copy of that, I can get you one, does a great job in graphic, gra, uh, in, in showing the graphic of how dangerous I eighty-one is for that nine-mile stretch, uh, to, to Pennsylvania. And I'm gonna take some booklets down tomorrow to pass out to those that didn't get those during the, the legislative meetings to make sure they understand and we can get that funding put back in. So, um, I'll try to do this just a little bit each week, um, just so you all know not only what's happening on a state level, but also local delegation. They have a delegation meeting every Thursday. I don't know if you all get notification of that. I can send it to you, but they have a Zoom. Uh, I think it's every Thursday at eight-thirty. Anybody correct me back there? And it lasts about a half an hour, forty-five minutes, where the delegation talks through, uh, bills that they're promoting. And I know, uh, Councilman Perini sits in. I appreciate him. Uh, he also sits on the MML meetings. I appreciate his, uh, his, he, he's not allowed to have any input during the meetings. He's not a member. But we talk afterwards and, uh, it's, it's good stuff. So any questions you have for me, you know, anytime, let me know.
Thank you.
So, um, attended the, uh, State of the County today. Wanted to make sure everybody knew that, uh, well, and Councilman Perini was there, and Councilman Perini, I don't know if you'll speak to this later, but, but, uh, we had many city staff there, a nice city staff turnout. Know a lot of you can't attend because you work during the day. Uh, it's tough for y'all to get out, and, uh, I hope they, you know, they realize that, that that's not to shun by the city. It's simply the fact that y'all have full-time jobs, and this is our full-time job, and we, we do not mind at all going to those events. Uh, and it was nice to, uh, to see, you know, what the county is up to. Also, want to send condolences to the family of Marvin. And his name is so, so close to mind, and I'm gonna misspell it or mispronounce it. Marvin Niswander, uh, who was a auxiliary police officer for years. He passed away. I want to send condolences to people. I'm sure, uh, he's been, uh, helping us cross the road from the Maryland Theater and has been on the scene in many fires and, uh, done traffic control, and a good guy, and just wanna, uh, send condolences from, from our staff out to his family. That's it for me.
Councilmember Shandman?
Uh, just a few things. Um, my son doesn't know it yet, but tonight he gets to watch a very, very awesome video. I don't know if you still hear, about, uh, the water system and how it works. You know, I've, I've been honored to, to be able to go to those facilities, and it's fantastic what they do. So I'm glad that, um, the citizens get a chance to kind of get a, a behind-the-scenes peek because it's really fantastic what's done. It's really amazing how the water gets through our system. So, uh, the other thing I just wanted to say is how can you not be excited having, sitting and listening to Kathy and Doug's presentation on all the development happening here in Hagerstown? You know, we've got our hurdles, we've got our struggles, but man, how can you not be excited seeing that? So, I mean, thanks to the economic development staff and just, I, I'm looking forward to the next year. Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Alshar?
Councilwoman Burnett?
I have a suggestion. Uh, if the city could issue a press release about the work going on in people's yards with Comcast. I live in Hager's Crossing, and we didn't get much notice of people digging up in the front yards, except for a couple flyers here and there. And there's, you know, um, utility flags throughout the neighborhoods, and it's, it stirred up quite a bit of concerns with the community, like what's happening? We don't know what's going on. And just recently, the HOA just sent an email today, even though the work has already started, if we could just send a press release out letting everyone know, if they see Comcast out, they could possibly be in your yard. So, yeah.
Okay, 'cause we usually know when everybody else knows. They do, they do file permits, but we don't get a schedule of where they're gonna be at what particular time. So, um,
Maybe we can do just the heads up.
People know that.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's coming.
Yep.
And yeah, the water video was great. I hope there's school staff watching that can share that with their students. I know that, um, we get a lot of questions about water, and that'll be helpful for everyone to know. So, good job on that, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Perini?
Thank you. Um, first I want to say, appreciate the opportunity to sit in on both our, um, conversations with our city lobbyists as well as the MML. It's very insightful, and, uh, as I previously said, I'll say it again. It's, uh, our, our city administrator does an incredible job, not only for our city, but for the entire state through MML, you know, looking into all of these pieces of legislation and, and more. And, and sometimes it's just mind-numbing. So, um, being able to adjust it and comprehend it and then understand the ramifications, very important. As was mentioned, I did attend the State of the County this morning. If you have a chance to watch the video, it was interesting. But I also will say, and, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around some of the comments that the commissioners made today about supporting workforce housing and some of the things we heard ha, here this evening about what they're actually doing. So the words don't seem to match the actions. And I don't quite understand it. Maybe it's 'cause I'm new to this position, and I'm seeing it from a different perspective now. But I, you know, I certainly think that it's important for, you know, all the folks watching, the, the community, uh, to understand that, um, the city is being very proactive, working very hard, uh, to try to figure out the way forward and how to, uh, not only continue the growth that Councilman Schindler just referred to and mentioned, but the housing component that has to go along with that. And, um, so at this point, just kind of mark me confused as far as what it is the county is actually doing or planning to do. Uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, getting, uh, into their twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan because I presume that that will give some answers. But with all of that said, my personal opinion is we stay the course. We've got some incredible assets here in the city. And, um, I just think that, uh, we need to not lose sight of the fact that, you know, Hagerstown is, is a incredibly important part of this county and not let others lose sight of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman McIntyre? Councilwoman? Nothing? Oh, okay.
I meant that.
I just have a few things. Um, yesterday I attended Youth Council's, um, meeting, and I dropped something to them. I wanted them to work on getting a poet laureate, a youth poet laureate. Um, and so before I even left the meeting, they already were working on, you know, looking at where other areas hatted, um, how, how are they, who would the partners be, the school system, the library? Just really excited about the youth council, and I also am really excited about them doing more. They were actually working on their Mental Health Day, um, which will be an event that they're gonna have. Um, and I told them that once they get all, all their stuff together, they should come in and make sure that the public knows that they're putting together something really special in the fairgrounds that is really tailored and geared towards them, um, which is young people. I went to William Sport High School today, and they had a poetry slam, and I hosted it, and it was really, really cool. It was two different periods. Um, it's, uh, it was interesting because this is Black History Month, and it's the artists, African-American artists. And as an artist, um, I know you guys know, I'm a poet. Um, I kind of fit into this. I, I, I conform into this. But I mean, up there on the stage and in the open mic venues is where I really get free. Um, and I just want to thank the teachers and the staff at William Sport High, and definitely your daughter, um, and Ms. Jackson for reaching out and allowing the kids to really just have, I mean, the, the, the kids that came in in their class, they were the audience. But I worked with four poets today. I coached them right in front of the, the audience, and it was amazing. They had some really powerful poems, and I thought, wow. I was with youth council on Monday and poetry slam at William Sport High School on Tuesday. I mean, like, we might be on to something here. I want to, also, I want to just say, in reference to the State of the County, I apologize for everything that I cancel in the next couple of weeks. Uh, my daughter works for the juvenile facility, and she is a state employee. Um, she has four children, my oldest grandson, ten, twins, seven-year-olds, and a two-year-old named Israel. And she goes to work at six in the morning, um, which is a very early morning for those kids, and she loves what she does. But however, she thinks she's getting off at two, and she doesn't get off, like, she might not get off until ten. Which then means there's kids that are either at my house or at another sibling's house, and it's just all over the place. Uh, thank you to the staff for understanding. Um, it is very chaotic. And however, though, if I can't handle being a mom, then I probably should stay home and not be mayor. And with that, we are adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by city administrator Scott Nice Warner. Uh, we get to do this, uh, on occasion. Uh, you, you told me the other day, I, I can ask you anything.
Ask me anything. You know it.
Yeah, so that really, uh, that really opens up, uh, the possibilities. But let, let's go back to, uh, a little bit of what you talked about, uh, in the meeting, uh, this afternoon. And specifically, um, those legislative bills and, and, and things of that nature in Annapolis. You're, you're headed back to Annapolis, uh, tomorrow. Um, you, you outlined, um, where some of those bills stand right now. Uh, the, the support or the opposition from, uh, Maryland Municipal League. Um, what are the ones that sort of stand out to you? Because I know you were presenting everything to the council as a whole, but in particular, uh, the ones that you would find the most important, uh, as they relate locally to the city of Hagerstown.
Um, I, I think they kind of, you, you kind of group the legislation into, into, into different buckets. Uh, one is anything having to relate to exempting from property tax. Um, I don't think any municipality would have a problem exempting, um, whatever from property tax. If it wasn't our predominantly main source of revenue that, that we are able to provide, uh, taxpayer service.
Uh huh.
Uh, if we were able to get portions of sales tax or, uh, other, other, uh, consumer fees, those kind of things. Gas tax, uh, you know, cigarette tax, you know, sit, those sin taxes, we would call them, sin taxes. Uh, like West Virginia gets and like Pennsylvania gets.
Right.
Uh, then I think municipalities would be more open to exempting from property tax. But those, those pretty much, uh, are, are universally opposed. Uh, the affordable housing bills that the governor's put in, um, are, are, uh, and, and all of the, I think there's 10 or 12 bills that the, of the governor's package. That are being, uh, debated now. Uh, but the affordable housing one is one that is desperately needed because all of Maryland has a lack of affordable housing. And, but it has to be done in a measured way to where you're not straining the resources of the municipality, whether it be a county or, or a, a town or a city. Uh, you're not straining those resources. And I really think, um, that is something we need to continue to work with the administration on to try to hone those bills down. There's, there's, there's definitely room and it's workable. We just have to, we just have to get there. And then, uh, the other, the, the other part of that is the renters' rights bill. Where, um, it does have significant protection, uh, to renters. But by the same token, we also have landlords and owners that, uh, we need to make sure are able to still conduct their business. That's the other, that's, so that's a second bucket. A third bucket has anything to do when it relates to, uh, cost of doing business for the city. Workers' comp claims. Um, we certainly understand the need for workers' compensation when there are problems on the job. But those have to be measured and we have to make sure that for, as much as we're protecting workers, that we're not opening ourselves up to, to exorbitant costs. Um, and then whenever it comes to you, to the ability to provide, uh, quality utility service. Uh, and the ability to collect revenue because you collect revenue so that you can provide the service. If, if we start being impeded in our ability to, to collect revenue in one form or another, that's a problem. And we need to make, make sure that we have ways around, uh, we have ways around that. It's not to sound cold-hearted, uh, but it's, it's the cost of doing business. Because if you cannot conduct that business, eventually that cost will get forwarded on to either the rate payer or the taxpayer and that we do not want to do.
Yeah, just like it does in the real world, so to speak. Um, let's circle back to the, uh, the affordable housing real quick. Because there was, uh, some discussion about that at, uh, the state of the county presentation this morning. And, and I'm just a little unclear when it comes to, uh, the density part of that. Because there was some discussion about the density that needs to be created within that. But then there are a lot of pitfalls related to that too. So, ca- can you explain that a little bit, at least for me in my feeble mind? Because I'm, I'm not quite getting that.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for what the commissioner said.
Sure, sure, no, no, but.
Either.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there are different, there, there are different types of, of, of housing densities. You have a, a single-family home.
Uh huh.
You have townhomes, you have, you have two-level townhomes, three-level townhomes. You have multi-unit townhomes. You have apartment buildings. Um, you need to be able to make sure that dense, that, that what type of, of density house you, or housing unit you put, has to be able to, um, uh, be able to be serviced by whatever. Whether it be a school, it be a utility or whatever.
All right.
Uh, you don't want to let, the best way to, the, the best, and one thing that a lot of our developers do around here is, is mixed density housing. Where you'll have some single-family homes, you'll have some townhomes. Um, you see a lot of that down in, down in, uh, down in the metro area, like in places like Clarksburg, Maryland, around the outlets. Germantown, where they have some single-family homes, you have some townhomes mixed in there and then you have some apartment buildings. Uh, that's the optimal way to do it. It, it all can be, it, it, it's just a matter of planning. And, uh, and that's what our staffs do every day. It's work to plan those type of, those type of, of developments. The bottom line to it is there's a lack of affordable housing in Hagerstown, in Washington County, in Western Maryland, in the state of Maryland as a whole. And we've got to figure out a way, um, that we can get people housed. Uh, not, and I'm not talking homeless people housed, but we need to get people housed that want to come here to work and want to live near where they work. If, if they're priced out of the market, um, uh, and, and the market is, is hot right now. It's expensive. If you can't, if you don't have that type of affordable housing to offer to people, you'll lose them. And we, we not only want people working here, we want people living here. And we've got to find a way to produce the housing to allow for that to happen.
And when I hear affordable housing, I'm thinking to myself, well, what exactly does that mean? Are, are there some benchmarks out there, something that qualifies what that is?
There, there are. I mean, you've got bus turning, you've got affordable housing, you've got low-income housing, which I don't equate it to. Middle, middle neighborhoods that really are those type of mixed-use places. You've got, uh, the one thing in the, in the one, in the one bill in the governor's package is the difference between manufactured and modular type homes. Modular type homes don't follow local code. It's, they're like trailers. Manufactured homes are more, uh, and, and to be honest with you, I might have those mixed up. One of those ha- will have to follow local code and has to be put on a foundation and those type. Those are the, those are the type of, of housing we want and the type of housing we want to make sure get put in. We don't want a, um, a city, uh, and I don't think the county wants, uh, uh, developments full of mobile homes.
Right.
We want nice, primarily mixed-density type developments created.
Yeah, and all of this, uh, you know, is, is attempting to strike some sort of balance.
Right.
For all of this to, uh, come to pass. Now, uh, councilmember Alshire, uh, said after he talked a little bit about, uh, the jobs that are being created here by, uh, the development that is taking place, which i- is a very positive, but again, there's that balancing act because then you're looking at, uh, affordable housing, uh, uh, you know, uh, opportunities. And you're also looking at, uh, you know, school capacity. And we know that, uh, many schools are already over capacity. So, he said, you know, we have to figure those things out. Who is the, the we in that specifically? Because as was pointed out too during the meeting, uh, the city's hands are tied, uh, to some degree when it comes to the school issue. So, i- i- is that sitting down with the county, getting an audience with them to discuss this specifically? Bringing in, uh, uh, Washington County, uh, Board of Education? I mean, who, who are all the parties that need to come together to, to get us to where we can figure these things out? Because I hear everybody saying, we need to figure it out. So who are the, the parties that need to come together?
I mean, so look, o- obviously our school sys- our school systems are, if, I, I'm speaking for the city. I'm not going outside the city when we talk about education.
Yeah.
Because ultimately we don't have a say in, in, in what schools get built, where they get built, when they get built. Uh, but, but the councilman was absolutely right. We haven't had a new school built since, you know, the early twenties, twenty-tens maybe.
Which is crazy to hear.
Yeah, and a high school. I can tell you, I was on a redistricting committee with the Board of Education back in 2000, 2001. And it was always the, the plan back then to put a school in the east end, a high school in the east end to help alleviate the overcrowding north and south. Um, and that was really, but, and that was when the development started. You had the Black Rock, uh, developments going in. Uh, you had Brightwood Acres, uh, uh, all that development to the east end, east end of town. It needed, it needed a new high school. Well, it got Eastern, it got Route Ham and Row, fine and dandy. Uh, but what you find is a lot of those students, they live in town. Um, we need a high school. We need another high school in, in this, in this city. Um, to alleviate the overcrowding that's happening at north and at south. Uh, you cannot continue to put portables up, uh, and expect, uh, any quality of education. Uh, well, I won't, I don't want to say that because we have a quality education. But you need to be able to make, to have people comfortable, kids comfortable, they can walk the hallways and not have to bet, to bump into each other. Uh, they need to have the amenities that a new school, uh, would offer. Look at Berkeley County, West Virginia. Look at the schools they put there. Uh, look at the development they've had in Berkeley County, West Virginia.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that is what we need here, but they have to be built. There has to be money for it. Uh, we don't have an APFO in, in Hagerstown and I may be speaking a little bit out of school here. But I don't think, um, uh, an APFO would be such a bad thing if we knew there was gonna be a city school built that that money would go to, go to building.
Right, because then you have some assurance.
Because then you have, you have some indication that the, the money those developers paid to put that community there will actually go to a school that will attract more people to come and live in that development. Until that happens, it's useless. Because why would a developer pay for a school, uh, pay an, an APFO to put a school in Boozber? It doesn't help us. Uh, but that, that's, those are discussions need to be having. At some point, somebody's gonna realize that, um, communication does actually work and, and you can actually have those type of communications, uh, amongst not only, not only staff but elected officials. And, uh, we can get some of these problems solved because it's coming. Everybody has said, you know, up in, you know, for the longest time, that development stops at Frederick. Well, you know, well, guess what? They found Hagerstown and they found Washington County. And, um, and, and the quality of life we have out here is a good quality of life. But it's, it, to be able to maintain that and to be able to attract, you know, warehouses, manufacturing, people are gonna look here and they're gonna say, what, what am I building? What am I getting from building here and putting jobs here? We have to be able to provide them that answer. Right now, I think we struggle at that.
Yeah, and, and I, I'll say this and this is my opinion. It seems like we get in our own way with those things because we want to be bigger and better. We, we want to be attractive to those on the outside. We want those people, as you said earlier, to not only come here and work here, but to live here too.
Right.
But then we have to take those steps. And when I say we, that's a collective, uh, within, uh, the county itself.
Right.
And, and another And, and another one of those issues, certainly, and we, we produced the video and showed the video at the meeting, is water. And there still seems to be a lot of misunderstanding, I think, as it relates to water. But, so my question is, because I, I sensed it a little bit at the State of the County this morning, is, you know, what is the, the city's ask of the county, if there is one, as it relates to water? Because when we had the joint meeting with the county, it seemed like they jumped on the fact that it would cost a lot of money and the city's saying, "Here are the projects that we're working on related to water." And then they said, "Well, so you're asking us for money." So what, what is the city's ask, other than for the county to understand the way that the city does things related to water and, and distributes water and all of those things that we've talked about? Is there an ask of the county beyond that?
No. The, the only ask would be that the, the water that we produce is not just for city residents.
Right.
Whether anybody likes it or not, we, we are a county resource, but we own that resource. And that, that's not going to change. I, I don't see any elected body coming in here and basically ceding any of that because we own the system. We, we, we started the system, we own the system. It was done for a reason back in the day. You know, a hundred years ago, almost a hundred years ago now. So we're not asking for anything. But to be able to expand the system, to be able to fix some of the, the aged piping that we have, to be able to do some of the things that we want to allow for increased development within the county. It would be great to have the county's help. It would be great to have a second, a second water resource, whether that resource be in Smithsburg or wherever it would be. It would be great to have that, but it's going to cost money. No, we can't afford to do it on our own. If we have to, we'll, we'll spread it out. That's okay. We own the resource. We're fine with that. But ultimately, we want this resource to be, to be one that we can, you know, help the county in doing the expansion the county wants to see. We don't want to turn development away. But there, and, and again, I will say it a million times, there is not a shortage of water. We are not running out of water. It's not like we have a well and that well is going dry.
Right.
That is not the case, period. End of story. Again, there is no water shortage. What there is though, is a definite need to upgrade the system and to provide more opportunities for development. And that's in working with the state too. The state puts mandates on, on how much we can produce and how much we can, you know, you, you can produce it, but then you also got to get rid of it, and that's where wastewater comes in. And the state has regulations there. And, and we've got to be able to work with the state, and it's going to cost money, no doubt. And we get a lot of that. We maintain the system, as I said earlier. We maintain the system just fine. We're, we can, we got that because we've been doing it a long time. We got that. But to be able to, to do any of the, the additional things we need to do, we don't want to push $100 million of rate hikes on, on, on the customer. We won't do that. But we need to work with the state and we'd love to work with the county on, on how we do that with, with, with the system. You know, you heard a lot today about creating an authority. I don't know why we need an authority. We haven't had any issues in discussing things with the county up to now. I don't really know what has changed. We, we, we would, we'll talk to anybody about things, but ultimately, the city of Hagerstown owns the water system. And we have to, to make sure that our customers, our city customers are taken care of, and we have to make sure that that resource is also available. Within the MRGA, the medium range growth area, and if any, and if, if the, the, the growth area outside of that wants, wants to be developed, we're going to need some help. Sorry to rant.
No, that's okay. On that topic, about the medium-range growth area and areas that have already been identified for expansion or for water service and things of that nature that would need to be there from an infrastructure standpoint, just like the, the Blaine annexation, which was discussed. You know, I, I mean, that has to be a source of frustration overall. And then for a developer to then decide that, yes, I'm willing to wait five. You're, you're not going to get many developers who are going to say, "Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'll wait five years."
No.
So, so my, my question on that is, you know, it, it seems like, and again, discussions can be had, but then there has to be some understanding and some moving forward in order to make some progress here and, and, and ultimately, I, I, in my words, make some sense with all of this stuff.
You, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Right, exactly.
You can't want, you can't want development, but then not, not allow it to happen.
Yeah.
And, and no, you're not going to have many developers that, that get told that they can't, that they can't get a resource or, or they, they can't be annexed until five years. You're not going to get many that do that. And, and what's going to happen is, is that they're going to hear that enough and then people are going to start wanting, stop wanting to develop here.
Yeah.
And West Virginia's going to continue to boom, Pennsylvania's going to continue to boom, and we're going to be, you know, we're just going to be, you know, a stretch of 81 that no one wants to drive on their way to Pennsylvania or on their way to West Virginia. I mean, it's as simple as that.
And isn't that really one of the things that we heard for years? You know, Maryland's not a good place to do business. And, and, and I, I mean, that was an overall statement overarching for the state, but then all of a sudden, you know, we're doing a great business with the, the North Points of the World and so on and so forth, and now all of a sudden, the brakes are put on something like this.
And, and, and the county has done a tremendous job of economic development and, and as well, as well as the city.
Yeah, I, I think that was one.
Tremendous job of economic development.
That was one takeaway from their video today. I mean, if you take anything away from that, I mean, look at all of those projects that have come to fruition.
Yeah. It, it all goes back to what I was saying before, to be able to do, you, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Yeah.
And I really hate to see, you know, all the work that the county's done, that, you know, a great group of folks at the county, and, and the, and the, and the things that my group have done here all go for naught because of whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that type of decision-making, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I think we, we hit a lot of stuff here, you know.
What else you want to talk about? I've got plenty of time.
I, I, I think that's, I think that's good for this session. As you said.
Fieldhouse is moving along. You saw that today.
Yeah.
We'll have some more information on that next week, I think, on the lease agreement, next week or the week after.
Yep.
We're going to be talking, you know, the parking deck is coming along really well. A little nervous about that, but it's coming along really well. Looking forward to an opening day, if, if not the very, if not that first home stand, certainly, I hope the, the second home stand, but we're looking forward to the first home stand. I, I think, I, I just, I really, like Councilman Schindler said, there's a lot of great things happening around here.
Yep.
And, and it's, it's an exciting time to be doing a lot of this stuff. And it's just, it's great to see that, that folks are buying in. And, and we do have, we do have, you know, a lot of people coming over the mountain and finally finding Hagerstown and Washington County. And again, it's not just Hagerstown. They're finding Boonsburg. They found Boonsburg a lot sooner than they found Hagerstown, which is great.
Yeah.
Smithsburg, Keyesville, a lot of great things are happening in, in this county. And, and it's great that, that as municipalities, we're able to work together and, and, and help each other. And, and it's just, it's a great time to be, to be in Washington County.
Yeah, it really is. Good luck in Annapolis tomorrow with everything.
Down there pushing 81 as much as we can.
Boy, that's.
As much as we, you know, we, we do push the fieldhouse and we do things related to the city, you know, ultimately, we are all in the 81 mess.
Yeah.
And it, it makes me nervous for the folks that have to travel 81 as their primary way, either to work or to get home, because it is dangerous. And, and what we're, what we're trying to do, and when I go down there, when I get down there, I, I just try to push the fact that we need 81 expanded.
Yeah.
You can look at what's happened in West Virginia. West Virginia fatalities have dropped exponentially since they three, since they made three wide down through Inwood. That can happen here, and we've got to do it now because we, I don't want another person hurt or killed on 81 because of the inadequacies of that road. So that's, that's really our primary push.
Yeah, I know the municipalities deal with what is really a, a minor product of those accidents, and that's traffic coming through their towns, but that's nothing compared to a loss of life.
This is not a quality of life issue, like the, like the purple line in, in Baltimore.
Yeah.
Or rail system upgrades down. This, that's quality of life issue. This is a life or death issue we have here.
Yes, it is.
And, and I think we've got some ears down there that are, that are understanding that, but we, we just got to push, we got to push it hard because it is, it's life or death. I don't, I don't want, I know the county doesn't, and we're all working. All the municipalities in, in Washington County are working towards that end.
Scott, thank you for your time. Thanks for allowing me to throw some less than easy questions at you.
It's all right.
Not exactly putting the softball in the tee all the time.
That's why we do this, man.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Transparency at its best. Thanks to Scott Nice Warner. Thanks to you for watching and look forward to seeing you next time on Council Wrap. For now, that is a wrap.